Yep. Hello, hello. Hello, hello. Sorry, 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 sorry. Good sound. Yeah. So let's all have that. Thank you, thank you. I'm guy. If you need translator, they have translator here. Okay.
Hello, my name is Nikki Fortinato-Bass. I'm a 25-year resident of Oakland's District 2, and I got my start as a community organizer right here in Chinatown. I'm proud to represent you as your District 2 council member. I'm also proud to be the first Filipino-American elected official. I know that many of you are here because you love Oakland, you love Chinatown. I also know that many of us are fierce. I am angry and frustrated at all of those things too. And over the last four years, we've been able to do a lot together. We have been able to establish an eviction moratorium, to keep tenants in their homes. We've been able to fight anti-Asian hate with increased police patrols and community ambassadors. We've been able to invest in our businesses and our parks, and I look forward to having this conversation with you today.
Thank you, candidate Lowe and candidate Bass. We're going to have the first two questions around the protection from displacement and cultural preservation as a topic. So the first question, you'll have a minute and 30 seconds to answer, is, as a candidate for council, what actions are effective? And how will you prioritize improving housing affordability in a neighborhood like Chinatown? And reducing displacement pressure on existing residents? And we're going to start with candidate Bass.
So we have to have a multi-pronged strategy around housing affordability and displacement. That has been a priority of mine, not only during my term in office, but for most of my lifetime as an activist and organizer. In terms of preventing displacement, I'm proud that the eviction moratorium is still keeping people in their homes. In terms of protecting tenant rights, I'm proud to be a champion of a host of issues around protecting tenants' rights, including the ballot measure that is before you this November. We also have to make sure we are creating affordable housing, and I have done that by creating a multimillion-dollar fund that helps tenants to purchase their homes with land trusts and become homeowners. I placed onto the ballot an affordable housing bond that will raise $350 million to preserve and create affordable housing. These are the types of things I'm really proud of in addition to preventing homelessness and helping our unchallenged neighbors get off our streets.
Candidate Lowe, you have a minute and 30 seconds.
Thank you. I maybe just need to stand up and have a conversation. Can you hear me in the back? I think this is okay. Thank you. We are down 58% for housing starts in San Francisco and Oakland. The reality is that we have 5,000 units that should be built in the Bay Area. Oakland shares probably about 60,000 units. We need to have more housing to make sure to protect people who are here. We understand the dot-com people coming in and displacing people. One unit, two units, 10 units isn't enough. We have to have a comprehensive plan to be able to do that. We currently don't have that plan. When we've had larger starts, for example, East 12th, that was nixed in favor of low-income housing or housing for the unhoused. And we want to make sure that people who are here can stay here. I am a former executive director for the National Association of Minority Contractors in Northern California. I had two things today about growth and development in this area by having minority businesses build and construct housing area and to build, construct other buildings that will give people quality of life to be able to afford to stay here. We can build as much as we want, but if our people can't afford to stay here, they're going to be run out by other folks.
Thank you, candidate Lowe and candidate Bass. We're going to pause for just 30 seconds to a minute to troubleshoot some interpretation issues. So we'll just pause for 30 seconds, and maybe we could also make sure your mic is working properly too. Do you want to test?
How's that? Is that better?
I think it just has to be pretty close.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've never been told I needed to speak louder, but I'll try that.
And what other ideas do you have? And we'll start with candidate Bass.
Yes, I absolutely would. Chinatown is such a unique community. I often say Chinatown is one of the few living Chinatowns. This is not a relic or a tourist attraction. This is a Chinatown where we have residents who have multiple generations of history here, so it's important to preserve. I'm proud that in 2019, I set aside funding in our budget to create a Chinatown Community Benefits District. That is getting off the ground, and part of its mandate will be marketing and other measures to help preserve Chinatown, not only as a business district, but as a community. And there's many more things that we can potentially do, including investing in our anchor organizations here in Chinatown, the Oakland Asian Cultural Center, the Oakland Library. I'm proud to have worked together with the Friends of Lincoln Park to bring in $12 million to support the expansion of this rec center. That's $4 million from the city, $8 million from the state. We're working on a $2 million earmark with Senator Padilla to make sure this can also be a resilience hub. And then a few blocks down at Madison Park, we renamed that together as a community to Wilma Chan Park. If you walk over, you'll see the brand-new signs, you'll see a new public restroom, and then we will be celebrating in a very short time the reopening of that park in honor of Wilma Chan. Thank you.
Candidate Lowe? Sure, the question was, would you support policy and zoning protections to protect cultural districts like Chinatown? And what other ideas do you have?
Is this better? First, there were 500 Chinatowns in California. So we're down to maybe a dozen or so that are functional right now. This isn't a matter of political will. This is a matter of making sure that we do the right thing. So first, we have to protect our community. I think that what has to happen is that we certainly have to improve the business community so that that business community can thrive and grow and expand in the other areas. We have to be more sensitive to our aging population. You know, it's really difficult to walk around in Chinatown with the cars that are speeding going through Alameda, the cars that are using the thoroughfare to get to East Oakland. We have to have protected spaces where there aren't vehicles. We have to have protected spaces, improve parks. When I was a child, we used to park near Webster. That park is not functional any longer. I know that there are resources coming into the community, but we're not protecting the infrastructure. We've got to spend a lot more money to be able to protect the parks and the land and making sure that the businesses around this area don't succumb to being displaced and that they will be able to thrive.
Thank you. The next question is on the topic of community safety. So as a councilperson, you will work collaboratively with your peers to have final decisions over funding revenue, budget accountability, and city policies. So what programs will you invest in to ensure adequate funding goes to violence prevention and more effective police responsiveness? And the first person is candidate Lowe this time.
When we talk about investing in certain services or certain organizations, there was a report that came out from the city auditor's office that we haven't done a very good job of monitoring these organizations that we've given money to. I'm really worried that we are giving money to organizations because of political relationships, and they're not effective. When we look at violence prevention in Oakland, we haven't made a dent over the last several years. In fact, due to the pandemic, violence has gone up against women and against the aged because people have been locked in and they've been able to abuse people and not be held accountable for that. I want to be able to look at the organizations that we are using and to be able to assess. If you asked me a week ago, I would have given you some organizations, but I'm really worried from this report that we received that there were $69 million spent in three years, and we don't have an accurate measure for where that money was sent. So I'm very much interested in making sure that we don't give money to organizations that are from out of the community, out of town, and they're not using those resources for you, for the folks that need them.
Candidate Bass?
My approach to public safety is about partnership. Partnership with you all as the Chinatown community, as well as the Little Saigon community, partnership with our law enforcement partners like the police department, partnership with organizations like Family Bridges and others who do community ambassador work. And I'm proud that over my tenure, I have expanded our public safety system. We have invested over $17 million in violence prevention programs. That is funding programs right here in Chinatown. We have created a crisis response program in our fire department that is taking on nonviolent, noncriminal 911 calls. That will allow police officers to focus their time on serious and violent crime because right now, police spend 60% of their time responding to 911 calls that are nonviolent, noncriminal, that do not require a police officer. And we need to make sure that police can focus on improving their 911 response, improving solving homicides and serious and violent crime. And lastly, I have been really focused on making sure that we can fill the vacant positions at the police department, officer positions, as well as investigator positions and ceasefire positions. We are giving OPD the tools they need to partner with you, and that includes our partnership patrolling here in Chinatown, as well as in Little Saigon. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is also on the topic of community safety. Yes, we're going to take a short pause. To ensure responsiveness after a crime has happened. For example, survivor support and follow-up, investigative resources that focus on the targeted task of bringing individuals who have committed violent crimes off the street, restorative justice, or re-engagement with the community.
Thank you for that question. One of the things that I think is really important is stopping violence before it happens. That means having violence interrupters in our communities, community outreach workers, gender-based specialists. And we've also been able in the city of Oakland to expand restorative justice, including with young people. That's not only through our Department of Violence Prevention Investments, but also through the Oakland Fund for Children and Youth, which I reauthorized two years ago. I want to give you an example. Part of my district also includes the San Antonio neighborhood, as well as here in Chinatown. And many people have reached out to me after violence has happened for help. I want to quickly shout out the Asian Health Services because they are providing trauma-informed victim support together with Youth Alive and a host of other organizations. And in San Antonio, when someone reached out to me after there was a shooting and there was a family member in the hospital, they didn't know what to do. And because we have more resources here in Oakland, I was able to connect them with one of our service providers who was able to find a Vietnamese-speaking translator to work with the victim's mom and help her understand what was happening at the hospital, to work with a young woman who was his girlfriend, who witnessed the trauma. And so they have been able to navigate with case management, victim support. They've been able to access resources and also deal with the trauma through mental health services. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Candidate Lowe, your turn. Sure. How will you work with wide-ranging community stakeholder needs around public safety to ensure responsiveness after a crime has happened? Some examples are survivor support and follow-up, investigative resources that focus on the targeted task of bringing individuals who have committed violent crimes off the street, restorative justice, and engagement with the community.
I believe that the first aspect of working with people after a crime has been committed is to do our best to make sure that crimes don't happen in the first place. The reason why I joined this race, I know San Antonio. I had a brother who was killed at eight years old in the neighborhood near the park. I understand the challenges that people have with violence in this community. Six months ago, I was attacked crossing the street over here in my car. I understand that this community has been preyed upon, and we don't have the services to meet your mental health and your emotional health and your physical health. I was here with the Rotary Club about four or five months ago where we were passing out alarms to many of you to make sure that you were protected in the community. When we talk about stakeholders, the thing that I find very interesting is that we've never talked about those religious communities, those cultural institutions that we need to support. We have to make sure that they're part of the healing. You know, growing up here and having different multicultural experiences in my background, I want to make sure that we have healing, and the organizations that we've discussed really aren't speaking to that. The $17 million that was removed from the police force was placed into some of these organizations. I think that there's a stark contrast in how we see protecting people. I think the money should go back to the police force. I think that you need to be protected by using neighborhood prime prevention councils. Sorry.
Thank you. So the next question is around pedestrian safety and public health. So Chinatown has long identified its core transportation, pedestrian safety, and public health concerns as being negatively impacted by the large amount of traffic that comes through the neighborhood. Historically, that's been the traffic to and from Alameda. As a council member, what resources will you make available to ensure that the large infrastructure projects like Oakland-Alameda Access Project and the Howard Terminal Ballpark do not contribute to even more auto traffic, pedestrian conflicts, lack of Chinatown destination parking, and the hazardous air quality in the neighborhood? And we'll start with candidate Lowe.
That's okay, you can say that. I think that the first thing we need to do is to have protected zones for pedestrians. I propose us having a system-wide pedestrian zone called the Spider. We can go to other communities in their zones where people can walk and engage with parks, engage with transit. I think that we need to have that focused here, and we can give people access. We also need to provide for slower streets. If you look at larger cities, look at Washington DC like ours. The traffic is about 50% as fast as ours because the streets move slower and there's more density. We could certainly have the opportunity to be able to create speed bumps, but we need to have zones where cars simply don't go. It would protect the environment. It would protect the community. It would protect him. So there are places that he can walk freely and not be obstructed by cars. There are a variety, that's okay. There are a variety of different areas where we need to make sure that we are moving traffic around the community. If we're going to make a commitment to bring the A's downtown and a commitment to grow our downtown, we need to make sure that that does not happen at the expense of Chinatown. It happens around it.
Candidate Bass?
The Chinatown community has been so impacted by pedestrian safety. People have been killed on our streets, injured on our streets. And in 2018, when Oakland did an equity indicators study, Chinatown got a 1 out of 100 in terms of pedestrian safety. We are working with the community to change that. And the vehicles that you see around you, that you hear around you, that's contributing to carbon inside your homes. As we have been testing carbon levels inside people's homes in Chinatown, it matches the levels at West Oakland, near the port of Oakland. Now, one of the things that's really important to me as someone who was an organizer before I got recruited to run for this office is listening. And I have listened to the Oakland-Chinatown community. We have worked together around where the A's ballpark will be. I supported the community against not having it at Laney College. And I have been supporting the community around Howard Terminal specifically to listen to your goals and demands, to ensure there was a traffic study. That study has been completed. I know the coalition will be meeting with staff and the consultants around that study. And it's incredibly important to me to hear what your feedback is, to hear what you want incorporated into the traffic management plan because I will not approve a project that harms this or other communities here in Oakland that harms our environment, our port, or our taxpayers.
Thank you. The next question is on increasing general public open space. So parks and recreation centers are among the most important types of social infrastructure that helps us build relationships with our neighbors. The city of Oakland spends less than 2% of its budget on the Parks and Recreation Department. As council member, how will you prioritize, invest, and increase resources to the various parks, open space needs, and other community-serving resources throughout the district? We're going to start with candidate Bass.
So when I think about a safe, thriving, vibrant community, it includes our parks, not just the open space, but the activity, the programming, like you see here at Lincoln Rec Center. This is the most utilized park in all of Oakland, multiple generations, all hours of the day. And over my term, relative to other council members who have preceded me, I'm proud that we have invested deeply in District 2 in our parks. Like I said earlier, $12 million to renovate the rec center because more and more people are coming to use this rec center, and $2 million pending to build a resilience hub. We invested in Wilma Chan Park and will be investing more deeply. We're investing in Clinton Park in Little Saigon. We're doing a big investment in San Antonio Park. And when the community was frustrated with how the city administration was leading that master planning process, I stepped in and worked with the Friends of San Antonio Park to do deep community engagement. And I'm championing their goals and priorities for San Antonio Park to activate it, to expand it with a rec center, a library, and programming. I'm so proud that we now have finally a rec center director at that park, our largest in all of Oakland. Thank you.
Candidate Lowe?
I spend a lot of time with Parks and Recreation in part because I'm a scout leader. And so many of our scouts use the parks. If you go to the Rotary Nature Center, the new planter boxes that were built, your youth built those planter boxes. They raised the money, they developed those, and they had volunteers help build them. You know, parks and recreation only works when they're safe. We haven't heard a lot of information about why these parks are not safe. We can go to F.M. Smith. We can see out here right now. We can go to the park down the street. We can go to Franklin. And we can see that the parks are not safe. We can see that people are living in the parks. We can see that during the pandemic, when you needed to have a place to be, when your kids had nowhere else to go, they couldn't go to the parks because there was too much going on. We understand that the parks don't have bathrooms at work many times. We have fires. We had 800 fires in 2020 documented from people in our public spaces. We don't have the ability to be able to make the parks functional until we invest in them. I was a part of a committee in 2016 talking about raising the 2% threshold to 5%. We've had four years to talk about that. It didn't go anywhere. That has to happen, and that will happen under my administration.
So we have our final question before we go to the closing statements, and it's on improving youth programs. So our final question is, how will you center the voices, needs, and ideas of youth in transforming Oakland City government to be more responsive to our youngest residents? If you have listened to Chinatown youth during your campaign, what are their top priorities right now? And we'll start with candidate Lowe.
This is a question that's near and dear to my heart. I am on three organizational boards right now serving youth in Oakland. I saw Mr. Henry Chang pass by here. He was on city council when I became the first chair for the Oakland Youth Advisory Commission many years ago. When we talk about youth specifically in Chinatown, one of the challenges is that the reasons to be able to support them have to be enhanced. I had a conversation about an hour before I arrived here from a scout troop. It's the only Asian scout troop in Oakland. It's been around for many years. Amy Ying's father, grandfather was a part of it. And that scout troop no longer meets in Oakland because they don't have a facility to be able to meet. We're missing the opportunity to be able to support our youth here in this community. So we're going to provide resources for them so all those scouts will be able to play and work and study and provide leadership here at reduced cost. It was too expensive. They're actually meeting out of city. I can speak to a dozen organizational issues we have where we're not supporting youth here in Oakland. The Parks and Recs were closed for two years under the pandemic. We've not recovered from that. We don't have resources to make sure that the religious organizations can support the youth here in the area as well. Again, I'm the board chair for Oakland Lacrosse. I run scouts in Oakland. I run a camp for Oakland Rotary where we bring our kids to Monterey to learn about what it is to be outdoors in leadership, and I'm going to bring that to the city.
Candidate Bass?
So I've spent a lot of time in Chinatown for decades as an organizer and more time here because there's incredible programming. I've been supporting that programming, supporting our Parks and Recs workers, defending our parks budget, and focusing on building up this rec center because we need more space, we need more program. I have been fundraising for it together with the volunteers who've been dedicated to that literally for decades. I also work closely with the Oakland Youth Advisory Commission. We work together to reimagine public safety, and I listened to what they had to say in terms of keeping our streets safe. I also, through our budget, put in a line item so that they could have stipends to participate and guide the work at the city of Oakland. With this budget cycle, I put in a line item to support a strategic plan so that the Oakland Youth Commission could help guide everything that Oakland does from the perspective of young people. And like I said earlier, two years ago, I worked to reauthorize the Oakland Fund for Children and Youth. That is a $19 million fund that provides incredible programming, after-school programming, Head Start programming, a range of programming that is supporting our kids and our families. And again, the way that we can support our youth is also by using the structures of Oakland like the Oakland Youth Commission to make sure that we're being responsive systemically and listening to their concerns and putting money and policies behind it. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're going to wrap up this part of the forum with your closing statements. You'll each have one minute, and we're going to start with candidate Bass.
So again, I'm really proud to be your council member. I'm proud to be an Asian Pacific Islander council member representing District 2, as well as the city of Oakland and serving as a leader, as your council president. The past few years have no doubt been very, very challenging. But again, because we have worked in partnership, because we've built coalitions, we have accomplished a lot. There is much more investment here in Chinatown when you talk about parks. We also opened a We also opened a public restroom at Wilma Chan Park as well as at Lake Merritt. When you talk about homelessness, we opened the Oak Street Community Cabins as well as the tiny homes at Lake Merritt. And that has allowed us to make sure we are housing with dignity and providing services to our unsheltered residents, creating safer communities, creating a path for housing for everybody. There is a lot more that we can do, and I believe that working together with one more term, we can take these building blocks, these initiatives, these programs that we have just started and scale them up.
Thank you, candidate Bass. Candidate Lowe?
Thank you so much for being here. I have a minute. I'm not of blue blood. I grew up on welfare here in Oakland, and my parents were teenage parents. You know, in this community, if you said to me, "What's the number one issue?" And then, "What's the number two issue?" And the number three issue? We didn't talk about those today. The number one issue for you is to make sure that you're safe. I'm in this race because you're not safe. I'm in this race because four years ago, we made a decision to go on a different path for how we were going to police in the community, and it hasn't worked. Last year, there were reports from council member and from another member of city council that said that they wanted to reduce the police force by 50%. I've been in Oakland all my life. I'm 54 years old. I know I don't look it, but I'm 54 years old. I know that this community deserves better. Now, we can talk about my background, we can talk about being a financial planner, we can talk about me understanding eight different industries, but after I leave here today...
Candidate Lowe, your time is...
Oh, good guy.
Franklin, you're ramping up there. I just want to thank you both, candidate Bass and candidate Lowe, for sharing your strategies on acting on the important issues facing Chinatown and the city of Oakland, and we wish you both the best on your campaigns. Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, let's stop here, part one. So the audience, I hope you were inspired by what you heard from candidate Lowe and candidate Bass to vote for your candidate of choice. Be sure to register if you're not registered. And now I hand my mic up to Gilbert for some very important news.
Thank you, everybody. So my name is Gilbert. I'm the director of the parks. So welcome to Lincoln Square Recreation Center. My main job right now is to get you all fed. So the way we are doing this, we're just going to ask you to stay in your seats until your row is called. We will call a food at a time, which time the food will be over here, and we're going to hand you your meal, and then you go back to your seat, and then we'll go to the next row. So please stay seated until we get to your row, and we'll work our way from front to back. That's it. Go ahead and start. So handing up these menu items.
Okay, so I think the idea is that food will be brought to you, but if you need a nature break, you know the bathrooms are along the side of the building, okay? Thanks, and we'll be in recess for 15 minutes.
[Chinese] 转去第六台和议员这里是 Oakland的港口 河口很强大这里是 Oakland的港口
呃，这里是刘
So we hope you all enjoy your meals. These were all locally produced. These are from the Cam Hong over in the Eastlake District. So while we're having activities here in Chinatown, we try to support our local businesses as much as possible. So we'd like to thank our sponsors for that. Another note for everybody, we have our trash and compost stations provided by the city of Oakland's Environmental Services Division. When you are done with your meals, please place the remaining leftover uneaten foods in the compost section and the plastic containers. You can stack them up in front of it, and then we'll put them all into the bags later on. So those will be in the trash because those are not recyclable. So thank you again, everybody, and welcome all the candidates to Lincoln Square.
Thank you, Gilbert. All right, so now we are beginning the second portion of our program, our mayoral candidates forum. Before we begin, let me provide a really brief overview about what the mayor of Oakland does. The mayor is the highest-ranking governmental official in Oakland and the figurehead of the city. They represent the city. They oversee government services for the city, but running the city itself is done by the city administrator, who is chosen by the mayor and follows the mayor's direction. The mayor prepares the initial budget and submits it to the city council, which adopts the budget and other legislation. The mayor may try to influence the city council by encouraging voters or others to put pressure on city council members. However, the mayor cannot prevent the city council from acting. The mayor does not have a veto. So let me review the ground rules for this forum. This event is being translated simultaneously into Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and Korean. The translators must watch and listen to the proceedings and instantly repeat what they hear in their language. So candidates, please speak slowly and clearly enough so that translators can do their jobs. Okay, so each candidate will have one minute to introduce themselves. Our moderator, who is Joshua Lee here, will ask the candidates five questions about issues that we believe are important to Chinatown. Candidates are expected to address the audience in response to the questions as this is not a debate between the candidates. And let's see, I would be remiss if I didn't introduce Joshua to you. Joshua is a senior program officer at the East Bay Community Foundation and has been leading grassroots youth organizing groups in Oakland for over 10 years. In his work, Josh seeks collective strategies toward racial equity and a just East Bay to be led by those most impacted. He was director of Asian Youth Political Action League, Building the API Community Power here in Chinatown for five years before his current job. Okay, as to the ground rules, let me continue on. Let's see. Did I say that this is not a debate and this is just a forum where people are... You're going to be addressing the audience with your answers to the questions. Okay. To make this as fair as possible, the order in which the candidates will be asked to respond has been randomized. And timekeepers, who are sitting in the front row there, will make sure that every candidate has the same amount of time, and they'll give a warning when your time is up. If you don't stop, your microphone may be cut. Appropriate measures such as the suspension of microphone privileges will be taken to prevent any speech or behavior that is disrespectful or not in accordance with the values of this community. Okay, so this is a neutral forum once again for the discussion of ideas. That means that candidates and their supporters are not to pass out, display, or wear any campaign materials during the forum. All right, with that, I turn the mic over to Josh.
Thank you, Evelyn. Hey, greetings, everyone. Appreciations to all the candidates for being present tonight and all the audience members. And deep appreciation for the interpreters and doing the work there. I'll just get us right into it by starting to introduce our candidates for tonight's Oakland mayoral forum with a short tagline of their current role as listed on the ballot. And their name tags are also in front of them. I welcome you to raise your hand or wave if you feel so moved. Seneca Scott, small business owner. Gregory Hodge, nonprofit executive. Lauren Taylor, council member and small business person. Peter Liu, entertainer. Sheng Tao, Oakland City Council member. Ignacio De La Fuente, business solution strategist. Alyssa Villanueva, civil rights attorney. John Raymond, retired carpenter. Tyrone Jordan, legal assistant. And Trevor Reed, council member, a senior caregiver. Okay, and with that, we'll begin with opening statements. A reminder, each candidate will have one minute. The order has been randomized and will change throughout the forum to ensure fairness, and we will begin with candidate Taylor.
Testing, testing. 金多泽高多盖下午好 我的名字是Lauren Taylor, and it is my honor to be here this evening. I want to thank the organizers who have brought us here today. 我是一个孩子， Oakland。我的根来自三代 而我非常自豪 真的， Oakland 测试 真的，很好，好吧 我得吃麦克风 好吧，好的， apologies. 所以，我是 Oakland 的孩子，出生在这里 我被训练为一个 proven problem solver，一个工程师，一个商人，一个 entrepreneur 在他们来自的城市或者他们选择成为他们的家。我期待后续的对话
Candidate Taylor, and appreciations to our timekeeper. Just for the interest of time, if everyone will hold applause to the very end of opening statements. Up next, we have candidate De La Fuente. One minute.
谢谢，非常感谢 我的名字是 Ignacio De La Fuente 20年，从 1992到2012 我可以告诉你，我的 20 年服务我非常非常地与 Chinatown 的社区工作非常非常地与 Henry Chang 和很多其他服务着迷的人在20 年中，我是一个有影响力的人 为什么？因为我相信，像 Chinatown 和 人们会说不同的语言，应该有相同的 access 各种服务都有相同的 access 所以我很自豪这一点， 以及你们可以享受 Chinatown。非常感谢
谢谢 candidate De La Fuente. 那它就会更好所以接下来我们有 candidate Scott.
晚上好，大家 Chinatown，感谢你们邀请我们 我的名字是 Seneca Scott。我是你的下一个 Oakland mayor 我是你的邻居 我有一个农场，大约一公里距离这里 有鸡、鸭和牛 我每天都会奶酪，我们可以喝 所以为什么像我这样的决定要当 mayor 对吧？ 所以，我决定回到政治 在我的老人生涯中，我一直是 Oakland 市民工作者协会的主席所以我知道一些关于谈判和合同我知道一些关于政府的运作但现在我专注于邻居们 我们需要声音，我们值得更好的 现在我们只是 franchise，我们正在燃烧燃料 而我们没有我们需要的 investments， 我们没有最重要的人听不到 Oakland 邻居，我们值得更好的 谢谢
谢谢 candidate Scott。接下来我们有 candidate Hodge.
晚上好，大家 我的名字是 Greg Hodge，我荣幸地担任你的下一个 mayor 在这个社区，多样性非常重要 你会有新的 mayor，三个新的城市议长， 他坐在 Wilma Chan 坐下的那个座位上和三个新学校 board 让你了解我们的技能，我们的经验，和我们的 temperament 我在这个社区工作了 40 年，作为一个 consensus builder 我是学校 board，我负责 investment board 工作与 Henry Chang，Henry 在现在 Oakland Thrive 上的 board 谁有 Oakland 的心，谁有技能，和谁现在准备带领 谢谢你，非常感谢
谢谢 candidate Hodge。接下来我们有 candidate Liu.
你好，我的名字是 Peter Liu 我来自 Tucson。我七岁就来这里 我去过 Oakland 学校，去过 UC 然后我去 war，杀了很多人 现在我成功了，我会教人们如何赚 30,000 美元一个月我想在 Lake Merritt 开一个巨大的水疗池 我想有四面八方的水行，绕湖，摆摊子，烧烤 grill 它会发光，好吧？谢谢
谢谢 candidate Liu。接下来我们有 candidate Reed.
晚上好，我的名字是 Triva Reed 来着谢谢你们邀请我们在推动 Oakland 前向，为所有我们所有人提供 保护你居住，让我们 businesses 开通，我们的社区 保持我们的公园开放，让我们的孩子玩 如我们今天听到的我被教育为 130 个兄弟姐妹中的 oldest 兄弟姐妹，只有父亲的 我决心作为你的 mayor 保持坚定
谢谢 candidate Reed。接下来我们有 candidate Villanueva.
晚上好，大家 我是 Alyssa Victory Villanueva 我要成为你的下一个 mayor 我是你的投票票数第七的你有三票支持这次 ranked choice election 你可以为我投票，还有其他两位候选人 我是 Oakland 的女儿，被 Children's Hospital 六个城市区的医院养育我甚至在 Chinatown 生活过，当时我在法律学校 我住在七号，因为我在 San Francisco 的公交车上依赖公共汽车我在这里做 laundry，我在这里购物 我在整个时间里和中国家庭生活在一起 我在每个城市区中都生活过，所以我知道 不是为我们所有 不是为有色人，不是为 immigrants，不是为我们的工人 我是 workers' rights attorney，同时也是 police practice attorney 我在改变，我在为你们服务 我的网站是 victoryforoakland.com
谢谢 candidate Villanueva。接下来我们有 candidate Tao.
晚上好，大家 我是 Sheng Tao，我是 Oakland 市议会的 pro temp 我很高兴再次来到 Chinatown 好像我们总是见面这里有很多熟悉的面孔我是 refugees 的女儿我的父亲来到美国 1992年 My parents came here to the United States in 1979, and I'm the first generation to have a formal education here. I graduated from Merritt College here in the city of Oakland, and then I went over and transferred to UC Berkeley, where I graduated and then came over and worked at City Hall. I have 10 years of experience at Oakland City Hall. And out of those 10 years, nine of those years, I worked on the city's budget. And so that is incredibly important to have that kind of experience so that we can move the city forward. I come with a collaborative leadership because I believe in working with the community and working with other elected officials so that we can create the impacts that is so needed here in our city of Oakland, like safe streets, clean streets, and safe parks. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Tao. Next, we have candidate Raymond.
Sisters and brothers, I'm not the "vote for me and I'll set you free" candidate. History shows that all change comes from the bottom up, not the top down. And that goes for the issues of poverty and homelessness, which is the root cause of crime, and well, as well as for high rents and low pay. And my campaign is all about building a movement from below, a working-class movement in order to reverse these problems on two particular issues. First of all, the issue of anti-Asian hate crime. We just saw an example of this in San Leandro just the other day. Such hate crime stems directly from Donald Trump and his actual fascist links, and that is why it's a matter of extreme concern to me that we have an actual fascist running for mayor here today. Second is the issue of the Howard Terminal Project. I'm the only candidate who opposes that project in principle. No matter how you sell it, it will mean higher rents, it will mean the end of Oakland Chinatown as we know it.
Thank you, candidate Raymond. Um, and last, we'll have, last but not least, we'll have candidate Jordan.
Good evening, my name is Tyrone Jordan. I'm a California native. I was born in Southern California. I've lived here in Oakland for only 13 years. Um, I'm a military veteran, former labor union organizer. I served on the library commission, the public library commission, and in addition, I'm on a non-profit, a director of a nonprofit which serves food, trust produce for low-income residents of West Oakland. Uh, just to keep the narrative in balance, I would like to say, despite all of the negatives and all the problems that we have here in Oakland, I've traveled many places in the military, I've lived many places, but there's no other place I would rather live here in Oakland. Oakland has all the qualities of being a first-class city, and the only thing that's keeping it from being a first-class city. We need to take, get a handle on the crime, we need to keep people in their homes, we need to put a brake on the displacement of people. We have the potential to really, really reach the stars of the city. So that is why I'm running for mayor. I'm a person of action.
Thank you, thank you, candidate Jordan. Appreciations to everyone, you may now give a round of applause if you wish. And we're gonna take a very brief pause, um, just to give our interpreters a chance to keep up and take a short break for one minute. Very much. Um, before we begin with the questions, just wanted to issue, um, a reminder that we not characterize other candidates amongst this forum, uh, just, this is an open forum and not a debate format, um, and so we're giving each audience member, uh, their own chance to interpret the statements given by the candidates. Uh, so we, as a reminder as well, we have a minute and 30 seconds for each of these questions, and they will be in different order randomly, um, each time, each candidate to the same question. Um, and these five were predetermined, uh, by Chinatown community members, and tonight we do not have the, the time to do, uh, questions from the audience. So the first question has some from Displacement and Cultural Preservation. If you are elected mayor, what specific actions will your administration take to prioritize improving housing affordability in a neighborhood like Chinatown and reducing displacement pressure on existing residents? And for this round, we are beginning with candidate Hodge, one minute and 30 seconds.
Thank you, Joshua. Um, that's one of the most important questions that most Oaklanders, uh, believe to be central to this campaign. There's a few specific things that we need to do in terms of producing more affordable and very affordable housing, protecting the housing stock that we have now, net cruise renters, and then building on those, um, building on those two elements to preserve the housing that we have. So some specifics, we need to protect Oakland's 47%. There's 209,000 people who are rent burdened. We need to maintain and strengthen our Just Cause Eviction Framework for both landlords and tenants. We need to reinstate our mortgage assistance program for those people who want to buy their first homes. We need to maintain our Oakland Rent Adjustment at 3% cap and create an Oakland Emergency Network by combining Oakland Housing Authority with Legal Assistance to provide legal assistance for tenants who are finding themselves in need. The second piece is, uh, I'm looking for my timer, we good, uh, producing 20,000 market rate and 20,000 affordable and very affordable homes by 2028. We need to make sure that we partner with the county. We need, thank you, we need to make sure we partner with the county, with the state for elements or proposals like the Black Hat Proposal, which Barhi and others, uh, put forward back in March. That would create a $500 million pot of money for first-time homebuyers in the community, an opportunity for nonprofit developers to actually participate in getting distressed properties and keeping those properties on the market. I mean fundamentally, Oakland is a town of about half of us rent, half of us own our homes, and we need to have solutions that go to both.
Thank you, candidate Hodge. Um, and as a reminder, um, and I know this is tough because the timing is short and there's a lot to say, uh, we are, we are aiming to, uh, when you see a signal that looks like this, that means, uh, try to slow down for interpreters, and that's, uh, the best way that we can keep this event accessible to everyone attending. Thank you so much for, uh, your understanding. Um, next, same question, council, council member Ray, oh, sorry, candidate Raymond, please.
I was involved, I was centrally involved in pushing for the Just Cause Eviction Ordinance, which was passed many years ago. But first of all, we have to recognize that just as healthcare for profit has completely failed us, so has housing for profit completely failed us. The free market is not working. It's not working in Oakland, and it's not working anywhere else. So what we need is a crash program to build public housing, housing based on human need, not on profits of a few, of a few billionaire developers like John Fisher, the owner of the Oakland A's. The second point is, we have, we cannot escape the question of the Howard Terminal Project, so-called Oakland A's, which is going to be a financial millstone around the neck of Oakland for many years to come. It will massively raise the rents and gentrify Oakland. The, when they pushed for the Oakland A's, they said for the, for the, for that project, they said that would turn Oakland into a tourist destination. Is that what you want for here in Oakland? It's going to mean more privatization, it's going to mean higher rents, and it's going to mean, uh, less jobs, some of the few really well-paid union, blue-collar jobs that exist here in Long Shore. So that is a central question for all of us here in Oakland, the Howard Terminal Project.
Thank you, candidate Raymond. Next, we have candidate Tao.
Thank you so much for the question. So in regards to affordable housing, I want to be very clear that what the current city administration and the current mayor has not done is build deeply affordable, affordable and moderate-rate housing. And so, right now, as a legislator, I am planting the seeds so that when I become your mayor, I can start on day one to start implementing and building this deeply affordable, affordable and moderate-rate housing. And I'm doing that through an enhanced infrastructure financing district. Because your next mayor, it's just not about the vision, it's about how do you pay for it and how do you execute and implement it? And I am the candidate who can implement and execute, but also know how to fund it. And that's how we're going to fund it, is through the EIFD. That's how we are going to pay for the development of deeply affordable, affordable and moderate-rate housing. Also, through this funding, which will gather us, which will garnish our, uh, our city budget, millions of dollars, we'll use that to invest into cultural zones all across the city so that there is no pressure for us to, uh, to make small Chinatown or Little Saigon or the Black Cultural Zone or any other zones, because we'll be investing more into it. We'll create places of identity so that we can actually be more robust and be the city to lead that charge, not only on the West Coast, but throughout the nation. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Tao. Next, we have candidate Reed.
We have not built enough affordable homes, as we've heard. We've got 7,000 low-income and moderate-rate homes that we need to build, and we need to look at what that proportion of housing needs to be here in our Asian community. We know with our rental assistance that we were able to help over 100 Asian community members in our city, giving on average $10,000 for rental assistance. We need to invest more deeply into keeping our communities in their housing, preserved in their housing, and preserved in communities where they connect and have the services, the support, and the resources that are needed. And so as mayor, I will continue to invest more deeply to make sure that our communities can stay connected, where they live, where they have communities, where their businesses are, where their family and their friends are. I have done that. We have 800 housing units coming up in the district that I serve now, and we need to do that more deeply with targeted investment to our communities and our communities of color. I believe that we do need to progress on the Enhanced Infrastructure District, where we can invest more money back into the communities that we are serving to increase the cultural arts, the cultural representation, the cultural legacy, the cultural history that's important to the diverse community that we have here. We're an Asian community here tonight, but that is felt all over this town. Making sure that we restructure as mayor, where and how we invest in the funds that go into rental assistance, protecting our renters rates that you're paying for those who have that, and making sure that we create more opportunities for you to be able to purchase a home with deeply affordable home ownership programs. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Reed. Next, we have candidate Jordan.
Well, well, I think the first thing we need to do, we need to determine, we need hard data as to how many homeless we have here in the streets of Oakland. And also, most importantly, I think we need to keep the folks here in Oakland who are in a precarious position to possibly become homeless, just try to keep them in their homes. And I think with that, we need to enhance the mortgage improvement program. I think we need to keep people in their homes. I think we need to concentrate our rent control. I think that we need to, uh, before we accept any large developers into Oakland, I think instead of typically a larger developer will come to Oakland, uh, if the problem is perhaps maybe providing 5 or 10% of affordable units, I think we should ask for more under those set of circumstances. So for three things, we need to keep people here in their homes, we need to put caps on rent, emphasize rental cap, rent increase cap, and we need to actually determine the greatest needs for those who are living in the streets with strong data.
Thank you, candidate Jordan. Next, we have candidate Taylor.
Housing affordability is a huge crisis here, and so it is on us as government to make sure that we are protecting residents, building the housing that's necessary, and making sure that we keep the city a place where residents want to stay as opposed to moving. So, building, we absolutely have to build more affordable and high-quality housing that requires, first of all, partnering with nonprofit housing developers, like I did in my district, building more than 800 and, or establishing a pipeline of more than 820 units in my district when we didn't have that previously. Also, the city has to look at how we can possibly develop our own housing on public land, and we have to look at the city and how it puts roadblocks in the way. We have to, have to get out of the way. Our building and planning department adds extra costs, extra delays, and all of that increases the cost of housing to residents. We also have to look at protecting tenants and current homeowners, low-income homeowners who are at risk of being displaced as well. That's important. When we look at how we make things more affordable, we have to also understand that we, one thing is to keep costs low, the other is to increase the amount that people can afford. So workforce development, job creation, establishing opportunities for people to earn more, that's what we have to focus on. With cultural preservation, I'm happy to have partnered with the Black Cultural Zone in District 6 to do that, just that, and I would do that citywide as mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Taylor. Uh, next, we have candidate Liu.
Hello. I'm a very wealthy landlord. I own commercial and residential properties. Everything is affordable to me, all right? So when I see, hey, we're talking about affordability, I'm gonna teach kids how to make like $30,000 a month so they would never have to worry about, oh, I'm gonna pay rent or not this, about that. Um, I would like everyone to be prosperous, and that's why I have a quick rich, uh, quick scheme, it's called CESP 5. I introduced this in 2014 when I ran as mayor and has made a lot of people successful. And, uh, some people even quit college just to, uh, get on my program, and they became wealthy landowners, all right? So that's the type of knowledge that I want our kids to learn so that they could afford everything they want in America. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Liu. Next, we have candidate Scott.
The rent is high. Y'all remember that? I'm a renter. If you don't raise your hand, I rent. Lot of money. It's scary. Know how much I pay in rent a year. You don't know how you bring rent down, you gotta build more. You see these quacks?
Candidate Scott, if you, uh, remind you, if you hold it there.
Thank you. The claims you see are it. There's no more investments coming to Oakland. Businesses are not invested in Oakland because of our crime. City Hall is still closed. Why would you invest in Oakland when the city hall is closed, when you can't even go anywhere? Our building department loses millions of dollars a year to chronic underbidding. That's called garden variety corruption, for those of you aren't familiar. So why would you come and invest in building more units in Oakland when there's no confidence in our city government to keep the city open and keep it functioning, keep our cities safe and keep our cities clean? So we have to tackle that so we can build more. Another issue is, this eviction moratorium that we have here. We don't want to talk about it, it's the boogeyman, but it's created a significant moral hazard we're gonna have to deal with very soon in Oakland. We're wait, we're risking potentially tens of thousands of people being unhoused in a few short months if we don't figure a way out of this crisis that largely our city council has created by ignoring and pushing with escape avoidance behavior the issues of COVID and our economy. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Scott. Uh, next, we have candidate De la Fuente.
Thank you very much. I'm coming back after 10 years because this city is in trouble. I mean, especially when you, when you're not able to walk the streets, when you're not able to feel safe, how are you gonna attract investment? The only way that you can build affordable housing and microwave housing is by attracting investment. Who's gonna invest in a city that cannot control crime and cannot make you safe? So the first thing that I do will be create that type of environment so people can invest. Second, leverage. We have to leverage private investment in order to build affordable housing. The city doesn't have specific funds for affordable housing. We have to create, we have to attract, we have to leverage that, that, those, those funds in order to create affordable housing. I will continue doing that, but let's face it, unless we create a city that all of us can live in and feel safe, nobody will invest. Who wants to actually build affordable housing and people cannot be saved? So that's the first, that's the only reason why I'm coming back, and I will leverage resources to make sure that we continue building affordable housing. The city of Oakland is actually one of the cities in the county that build more affordable housing than any other city in the county. But we cannot do it all, and the, and the only way that we can do it is by making sure that attracting private investment, attracting and leverage our resources. If we don't do that, we can talk a lot about it, but I think it's more difficult to do it. So I will commend myself to continue doing that in an effort to continue building affordable housing for all of us, uh, especially people, the seniors that are here tonight. So thank you.
Thank you, candidate De la Fuente, and next, we have candidate Villanueva.
Alyssa Victory again, number seven on your ballot. I've been homeless in the city as a teenager in Oakland, but I'm also a renter right now. I'm a renter along with my family and my god. I'm a renter along with my family and my godchild. People in my building, people in my family have received eviction notices, even though we are under an eviction moratorium. So laws and policies are great, but my administration will be about enforcing them, having real staffing in our homeless administration so that we can provide real services, eviction defense, so that we can educate people on what their rights are to begin with. I want to ensure that we're building affordable housing and not relying on private investments to do that. That's what we're doing right now, and it's not working. They want to build luxury, right? Anyone would want to, but our city needs to ensure that there's a baseline of affordability of public housing, of social housing. I will do that with public banking. I advised the city and San Francisco back in 2014 on how to do that. Laws have changed at the state level, funds have been created at the state level, we're in a feasibility study right now for Alameda County on creating this public banking, public control of public development of public housing. I also will champion a strong public lands policy, meaning that any of our city lands that become vacant, that become abandoned or condemned, that they will be prioritized to use that for development of affordable housing. Right now, we have all of your private businesses, your homes operating as shelters because we will not house people. I will house us. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Viña Nueva, and to all of our candidates for this first question. We're gonna now take a one-minute break for interpretation. Okay, now we're gonna get started with our second question of the evening regarding community safety. The question reads as follows. The mayor of Oakland has a powerful role in overseeing the Department of Violence Prevention, or DVP, which includes violence interrupters, community ambassadors, healing support for survivors, and town nights. Will you support the expansion of DVP's public health approach to include the Asian community in Chinatown and Little Saigon? How do you envision expanding DVP's work to promote healthy relationships between communities of color? And for this question, we're starting with candidate Tao.
Thank you. This is my favorite question. I am so honored to be the only candidate up here to actually invest $18 million into violence prevention and violence interrupters. And that is incredibly important. We have to invest in people and community directly, and I am so happy to have fought for the state money of $2 million to go directly to parks in East Oakland, parks that have been underserved and under, you know, everything, basically, right? And so this is what I want to do and bring to all of our communities, to ensure that our rec centers are taken care of, to ensure that we are investing, investing directly to you. I'm also very happy to have won $10,000 in grant funding so that I can bring it straight to Oakland to fight against AAPI hate. So please be on the lookout for that. That's the kind of mayor I am. I am hands-on, and I will continue to be hands-on as your next mayor and continue to be able to go out and fight for more funding and resources and programs. The first thing I do when I am your mayor come January is double the violence prevention and violence interruption money, because again, that is how we keep ourselves safe. And we need to also create government-run, um, uh, community building opportunities with our Black, Asian, and Brown communities as well. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Tao. And next, we have candidate Jordan.
I think in addition to fully funding our police department, I think to prevent certain crimes, we need to take preventive measures. I like the idea of advancing or enlarging the ambassador program that we have here in Chinatown. I like the idea of the macro program, which, uh, instead of calling the police, perhaps having pretty both people that can check in to those who are having emotional issues. I think our safety is, I think community involvement is more mostly really very important, and that's why I would emphasize as mayor.
Thank you, candidate Jordan. Uh, next, we have candidate De La Fuente.
Thank you. You know, the biggest responsibility of a mayor is to protect the citizens and protect property. Obviously, whatever program we have are not working. Obviously, the crime is, the, the recent crime in Oakland is off the hook. Now Chinatown closes at 4:00 or 4:30 because businesses aren't afraid to stay open. So whatever we are doing is not working. What we gotta do is go back to our basic, go back to do policing, go back to make sure that we have enough police officers with the ability to do their job. We got, as leaders, we have to require the police officers to do their job and enforce the law. What's happening in Oakland is that we have allowed things to deteriorate to the point that people come to do things that they don't do anywhere else. So all the programs that we are obviously working with are not working. So what I will do, not only make sure that the staff of policing, uh, that we need, I add more police officers, the more than anything, the mayor has to create the tone that we're not going to allow people to come to Oakland and rob and assault and do without any consequence. We gotta enforce the law. That's the reason why the things that are happening are happening. So that's what we have to do, go back the old-fashioned way, the responsibility to protect people and protect citizens. Simple as that. All the different programs and everything else, I'm sorry, the macro, I, I have a problem with civilians that are not trained and that are not prepared to deal with these issues, and I believe there's gonna be some consequence to that. Police is the one that has to do it.
Thank you, candidate De La Fuente. Uh, next, we have candidate Scott.
Good evening. Department of Violence Prevention has a very important job preventing violence. Ask yourself, has it worked out for us? Because the violence is escalating. The desperation is escalating. When we live in an oppressive system and we can no longer compete economically, we begin to compete for moral superiority, and that's worse and it's much dangerous. It starts with, at its least dangerous, the Department of Violence Prevention, which I believe is largely performative. It doesn't tap into the needs of the neighborhood. It talks to the neighbors, not with the neighbors, about what we need to be safe. Here's an example. Last week, we had the opportunity to further our use of license plate readers, which have been proven to stop crime. What did our city council progressives do? They said, we don't need license plate readers. Our city, our police chief says we do need them. He's the expert. The city council says we don't need them. They're not the expert. They instruct and they appoint members to that Department of Violence Prevention who echo those same anti-law enforcement sentiments, which have gotten us to the situation that we are today. So we need to be very clear that we support public safety. No more talking in public this way and talking behind the scenes that way. No more, um, supporting individuals who take back from public safety and don't do whatever we can to increase all the tools needed for public safety. So we need a revamp, and we need to appoint the right people to this department.
Thank you, candidate Scott. Um, before we move on, I'm just gonna take a brief moment by request to, to reread the question. The mayor of Oakland has a powerful role in overseeing the Department of Violence Prevention, which includes violence interrupters, community ambassadors, healing support for survivors and town nights. Will you support the expansion of DVP's public health approach to include the Asian community in Chinatown and Little Saigon? How do you envision expanding DVP's work to promote healing between communities of color? And next, we have candidate Viña Nueva.
Thanks for repeating that. Alisa Victory, Viña Nueva, number seven on your ballot. I work every day with our district attorney, our public defender, our sheriff, not just for this county, but for counties throughout the whole Northern California region about improving public safety. But I heard the question was about our Department of Violence Prevention. To answer the question directly, yes, I support expanded, increased investments, enhanced services through our Department of Violence Prevention. It's one of our newest departments. Even if we were to double its funding, it would only have around one-tenth of what our police department has. These are different departments that all should be working together for holistic public safety, right? Prevention is about preventing crime, is about preventing homelessness, about preventing joblessness. All those things can push people into crime. The last meeting I had in person before pandemic and lockdown started in 2020 was with the head of the Vietnamese Chamber of Commerce about how to keep Little Saigon safe, how to have more Black and Asian solidarity, how to have more understanding around what is happening in our cultural communities. I support expanding protections for Chinatown, for Koreatown, for Little Saigon, and if we're approaching this from a public health lens and perspective, then we need to have people who are experts in health. Our police officers are not that. So I support having more health, health-focused services and personnel in our Department of Violence Prevention. That means counseling, mental health. Right now, our mental health service is our jails, right? So we have to have real services, even for our youth, to learn alternatives to violence, including restorative justice.
Thank you, candidate Viña Nueva. And next, we have candidate Raymond.
Well, sisters and brothers, we have to recognize that we live in a country that is being, becoming increasingly violent, increasingly angry, increased divisions, and the general acceptance of just bullying in this country. And we have to be realistic. Oakland cannot escape those, that general trend in this society. And we have to develop a movement to transform America, and Oakland can become part of that. That's what I meant when I was talking about a workers' movement. Back in 1946, there was a general strike here in Oakland, and the chief of police reported that crime came to a complete stop at that time. Why? Because people were united in fighting for workers' rights, for the rights of just ordinary people. And what is the alternative to that? The alternative to that is put a cop on every corner. In other words, Fortress Oakland and Fortress America. That is not why millions of people came to this country in the first place. We need to build a movement to change this country for working-class people. That is the only alternative.
Thank you, candidate Raymond. Next, we have candidate Reed.
I have lived the deep trauma of being a victim of violence, of intimate partner domestic abuse. I have fought for families like mine who have lost their loved ones as our son Brandon's life was lost in 2013. I have been championing public safety, making sure that that deeper investment of $18 million that is mayor, that it is doubled. $18 million is historic for violence prevention, intervention, and healing and trauma care. It's needed, and our community needs more. I need it more as a mother and as a victim of violence myself, and so we've got to show up giving more and better to our community. As mayor, I will take urgent, swift, and ongoing action, having the ability to ensure that we have an equitable budget with investment into the violence prevention, intervention, and healing and trauma care. When Town Knights was not here in Chinatown in the Little Saigon area, Dr. Jintran and I worked to ensure that we met with Chief Cespedes, our Department of Violence Prevention chief, to make sure that this area of our community was not left out, that you were not forgotten. And so I fought to make sure that Town Knights did show up for you in June when we did not show up for you in December when we launched it. And I will continue to show up for you as mayor, making sure that we have a community liaison from my office that's working with you, meeting with you on a regular basis along with myself, to hear the opportunities to partner with you as I partner from East Oakland to West Oakland, having served with Youth Alive on their advocacy committee at the state and local level. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Reed. Next, we have candidate Taylor.
So what is public safety? Let's look right behind us to see. It is when our kids can be out at night playing in their neighborhood and enjoying themselves without fear of something happening, without being pulled into some alternate activity. We absolutely have to double down on violence prevention. And we have to also make sure that we are bringing the crime deterrents, the enforcement, and the follow-up investigations that are necessary to make a complete public safety system. When residents of, when residents of Chinatown brought 1,600 signatures to us in the summer of 2020 and pleaded with us not to defund the police, I stood with Chinatown residents and said, no, we cannot take away 25 to 50 million dollars away from our city budget, public safety, without a plan for how we're gonna keep people safe. I'm the only one that's up here that stood on the council at the time and made that call. I then called for architecting and then co-chair the Reimagining Public Safety Task Force to ensure that we achieved the both and, that we brought all of our resources to prevent violence and ensure that it didn't come and land on our communities like Chinatown. And I will do that as Oakland's next mayor, as Oakland's next mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Taylor. Next, we have candidate Hodge.
Thank you for the question. This is probably the most important issue to most Oaklanders. There's a couple of things that we have to agree on, that what we're experiencing now is not normal. It's not normal for a dentist to be killed as she's getting out of her car. It's not normal for somebody to be killed right in front of City Hall while a city council meeting is happening, like what happened last night. It's not normal. So we ought to get to the place where we don't accept it from our current leadership, people who currently sit in city council. We make, we make us safe. If you're not safe in Chinatown, I'm not safe in West Oakland. If you're not safe in Sabranny Park, I'm not safe in the Fruitvale. We have to figure out how the Office of Violence Prevention brings this community together in much better ways. We have to work to unite ourselves in the same way that we did during COVID. During COVID, the African-American Response Circle, the Resilient Fruitvale Group, Oakland AAPI Unite, Healthy Habits Corps, we all came together to go to the county, to go to the city, to ask for more resources. The DVP, the Department of Violence Prevention, is based on a model that I helped create in Richmond. In Richmond in 2008, based on that model, we brought down homicide enrichment by 70% in five years. The DVP that we have now doesn't follow that same model. It was sort of a kitchen sink model that threw all these elements together. We can do a better job of it. We can double the budget for, uh, DVP, even if we took the overtime resources from the police department. And lastly, your community deserves community patrols. Every community deserves the way they want to see law enforcement happen, but we make us safe. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Hodge. Uh, next, we have candidate Lou.
All right. The Department of Violence Prevention will issue concealed carry permits to every citizen, adult who wants one, and we would offer it statewide. So anybody who comes to Oakland and want a concealed carry permit, they would get it for $50, all right? And it'll be a lifetime concealed carry permits that they could use, because let's face it, Kung Fu is not enough, okay? This time, you need a gun to protect yourself. If you call 911, it's gonna take like 30 minutes, all right? Yet nobody, nobody's gonna come save you. You think I'm Superman? No, no, no. It's not gonna happen, all right? You need concealed carry permits, and I would issue it to statewide. Any resident who wants one will get one for $50.
Thank you, candidate Lou. Uh, that concludes the question two, and we're gonna take one minute to give our interpreters a break. Wants to issue a quick round of applause for each other, for all the candidates so far tonight, um, this evening. Thank you so much for your energy. We're gonna continue on. Um, question three is regards to improvements to pedestrian safety and public health. Chinatown has long identified its core transportation, public safety, public health concerns as being negatively impacted. being negatively impacted by the large amount of traffic that comes through the neighborhood. Historically, that has been traffic to and from Alameda. As mayor, what improvements or commitments will you make to ensure that large infrastructure projects, like the Oakland-Alameda Access Project and Howard Terminal Ballpark, do not contribute to even more auto traffic, auto pedestrian conflicts, and lack of Chinatown destination parking, and hazardous air quality in the neighborhood? And for this question, we are going to begin with candidate Reed.
We have got to do a better job of keeping our community safe on our streets. Our pedestrians, our bicyclists, our, our vehicles are coming into conflict with each other more. In this last budget, I put forth 1.5 million in traffic safety, calming mitigation measures to keep us safe, and those were not funded. And so as mayor, I have the opportunity to establish in a $3.8 billion budget, increase traffic safety mitigation measures that work to make sure that we keep us safe, ensuring that we don't put road diets that cause more impacts, with making sure that we have street crossings that are well-lit, um, that are painted, um, that we have the, the signage that's needed. We've seen that issues in school areas where we've not, from the city, provided even traffic safety and calming measures, cross guard, crosswalk safety. And so as the mayor, I have the ability to invest more deeply in those areas. As we talk about the project that is being proposed at Howard Terminal, it's making sure that we hear from you, that we meet with you, and that we address the mitigations and the concerns that you have continued to raise with us regarding the environmental injustice, of the air quality, of the pollution, of the traffic issues, of the illegal dumping, of the blight, of the impact on business closures. And those are priorities that I am working to address with you right now, and that I am willing, as your mayor, to meet with you, to ensure that we hear from you, to make improvements that benefit you.
Thank you, candidate Reed. Next is candidate Lou.
For all intersections, I would have cameras that are accessible on internet, where people could view the traffics around their area, and it would record any violators that run red lights, that the, uh, lots of happenings with these, uh, light, light-skinned run over, just like, they don't care, like, juh, just like that, all right? So, uh, with the Howard Terminal, I don't believe that, uh, that project is good for the, uh, streets, especially it would overcrowd the, uh, downtown area, especially with the BART stations, you know? Crowds of people would push, push over, and somebody would fall on the electric track, so that, that's not good. So Howard Terminal is a project that is not feasible. Uh, let's say they have this, uh, Howard Terminal park, and they have, uh, like a competition, and then, and then let's say the AIDS are lost or win, all right? There's gonna be riots, all right? Jack Lennett's gonna be destroyed, all right? These people will go over to Chinatown and rip them, rip it off, all right? So riots happen with these sports. So instead of sports, uh, I'm gonna have giant water slides at Lake Merritt, uh, attractions. I turn all sizable parks in Oakland into, well, unique theme attractions. That would bring a lot of entertainment for people instead of sports. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Lou. Next, we have candidate Taylor.
All right, I know you guys have seen it. Folks drive, fly down our roadways without any regard for the life that they could be injuring with the vehicles that they're propelling down the streets. We have to stop that. And how do we stop it? How do we keep people safe? We have to do the both-and solution again, from designing roadways that are safer, keeping people from treating our streets like interstates, and the enforcement side. We have to bring back our traffic patrol. Because when I was growing up and learning how to drive, the kids that I was learning to drive with, there was this saying, no cop, no stop. And yes, we do have to have traffic enforcement in addition to the roadway improvements design, the curb bowl belts, the medians, the speed bumps, and other things that we're putting in place. It has to be the both-and solution. In addition, we have to have a speedier response by our city when it comes to these incidents, when we find something that needs to be fixed and improved, redesigned. We have to work faster. That means we have to fill the vacancies in our Department of Transportation. We have to eliminate the bureaucracy and move faster towards bringing solutions that'll keep people safe. And lastly, whenever we bring solutions, we have to be community anchored and based, engage the community first, not bring a solution on top of them. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Taylor. Next, we have candidate Jordan.
Well, that, as far as pedestrian safety, as a jogger, I can speak from personal experience. Usually when I jog down Chinatown or any part of Oakland, I have to literally, even if the light is green, I have to dash across the street. I always, I'm always dashing across the street because most of the time, people are, uh, driving at ex, well, well over 60, 70 miles per hour, folk aren't paying attention. And I think the important thing to do is meet with the Department of Transportation and come up with a comprehensive plan to create barriers, to create, to create an environment where it's safe to actually walk and ride your bike without fearing getting killed. And also, I think a very important, uh, issue that I have near where I live in Lake Merritt, that folks riding down, riding down back and forth on the street with their dirt bikes, you know, all hours of the night. I think there need to be more enforcement there. So I think this environment, I think, uh, these streets would be safer, but I just don't see it very much enforcement. People are just, you know, driving if they're on the op, driving if they're on the Autobahn. And, you know, we need to put, uh, uh, public safety first, no matter what it takes.
Thank you, candidate Jordan. Next, we have candidate Scott.
Signs, uh, veo signs, if that, and when I say, people drive like they have no sense. But we're all used to it. You notice how that doesn't happen anywhere you, you leave Oakland? The moment you leave Oakland, people act like they have some sense. Why? Because you're gonna get pulled over. It's simple. But here, we can't pull people over because now they run. Remember what happened the last time someone ran from the cops? Two people were killed and a car shouldn't have. So we can't follow them because people are gonna run. So we need to start using other measures like license plate readers, street camera, and drones, something we haven't considered yet, that you could actually chase people. We need to confiscate vehicles. We have laws on the books. If you're driving 20 miles an hour over the speed limit, it's called reckless driving. The cop can take your car. You gotta go to court to get it back. We need to start using the laws that we have on the book to effect crime. When it comes to traffic calming, neighbors are gonna have to get involved. On Eighth Street in West Oakland, we've tracked for over six months with our Safe Oak, Safe Eighth Street program, cars driving upwards of 100 miles an hour in residential neighborhoods. We brought that information to Oak Dot, and we brought roundabouts, not just speed bumps, but roundabouts to West Oakland, something no one thought could be done. And it was done because the neighbors got together, we documented the problem, and we were persistent at City Hall for months to make sure that our voices were heard. Luckily, for you, if I'm mayor, you won't have to go through all those trouble. Uh, you could skip the line and just come to us.
Thank you, candidate, candidate Scott. Uh, next, we have candidate Tal.
Thank you. I, I believe the question was in regards to the Alameda Access Project and Howard Terminal, um, and the pollution for Chinatown and for West Oakland. So here in Chinatown and in West Oakland, these are the two areas that are the most polluted. And these areas also host our communities of color. Chinatown here with our API community, West Oakland, majority Black community. We are seeing that we have to be intentional about how we protect our residents from environmental racism. And that is why I'm happy to say that I am the climate candidate. More so with the Alameda Access Project, I steered firm with Chinatown to ensure that at the Alameda County Transportation Commission, that more traffic congestion would not come through Chinatown. And instead, we would create a safer place so that pedestrian can actually cross to the Chinese Garden Park, because right now, that's very dangerous. I know this work intimately, even though I do not represent you in this district, but I roll up my sleeves to ensure that all of Oakland is taken care of, even as council member. And so in, in regards to making sure that we protect our constituents here from the bad air quality, that is why during Howard Terminal, I am not a big cheerleader for Howard Terminal, not like others. But it's important that we negotiate strong community benefits. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Tal. Uh, next, we have candidate Raymond.
Well, there's no way that anybody can say that they, uh, have a plan to improve traffic here in Oakland if they do not organize strongly to oppose the Howard Terminal project, period. There can be no community benefits. That is not possible. The whole purpose of that, of Howard Terminal, is to increase gentrification. There's no way that it will not vastly exacerbate the traffic problems. It's been explicitly said by the promoters of the Howard Terminal project that they want to turn Oakland into a tourist destination. In other words, little Las Vegas. Is that what you want here in, in, uh, in open Chinatown? To make it just a tourist destination with thousands of cars coming in and out? You think you have a parking problem now? Wait till the Howard Terminal project is built. As far as, as far as community benefits, there can't be. All that is, that's just putting lipstick on a pig. It's just a way to, uh, for hush money, for a few businesses and a few nonprofits. It is, that's so, if you're serious about, about, uh, traffic, if you're serious about rents and gentrification, then you must organize and oppose the Howard Street Terminal project, period.
Thank you, candidate Raymond. Next, we have candidate Villanueva.
I'm Alisa Victory Villanueva, number seven on your ballot. I support a red, black, and green new deal, that is, green new deal with reparative framework and equity framework. This community, as well as West Oakland, is one of the most polluted, and it has been for decades. Urban renewal hit this community, devastating some of the housing that existed to build the freeway, as well as to build BART headquarters. The Alameda Access Project is to ensure that when people are coming from Alameda, from the Alameda Tube, they're not driving all the way down Seventh through Chinatown, but there's an immediate access ramp for them to get on the freeway, so that they can reduce all the traffic coming from other cities into this specific community. I support those measures that have been around and proposed for years now. I also support us taking traffic off of some streets entirely. Do y'all remember the Slow Streets Program that started during pandemic? It was very ghetto, right? It was just like a caution sign of, don't enter here. In the east, a lot of people just move them every morning and drive past them. But I think that was a missed opportunity for us to really assess there are some streets where they are so badly in disrepair, where people can't drive down them, or where we have such high pedestrian accidents that we should remove them entirely. We should have massive protected bike lanes, protective transit lanes. If you don't see, there's a lot of public transit that people in this community specifically rely on. When I lived here, I didn't have a car. Didn't have a car until I was 26. I depended on our free shuttles. I depended on my own feet to be able to walk to everything around here. So I want to enhance safety for this community, but also around the rest of our city.
Thank you, candidate Villanueva. Next, we have candidate De La Fuente.
Thank you. Uh, almost 20 years ago, uh, obviously, I supported Chinatown and negotiated with Alameda about the impacts on Chinatown. We have to be, we have to be realistic about growth. And one of the things that we have to be realistic about is who are the communities that have been impacted for a long, long time. But at the same time, what it boils down to is that unfortunately, in Oakland, at this time, everything goes. That is one of the biggest reasons that we have, uh, the problems that we have in Oakland with traffic, not only in Chinatown, but throughout the city, because everything goes. We don't enforce any of the laws that we have. And I know that that sounds simple, but it is critical. You can have all the laws and all the plans and the books, but if you don't implement them, if you don't have the political will to actually implement and to protect our community, the thing will continue growing and continue to be a problem. Um, the, uh, the Howard Terminal project, uh, I will. I will not only participate in the negotiations to make sure that if that project happens, mitigate the impacts not only to Chinatown, but the entire city. But we have to, again, cities have to grow. We have to grow manners to grow, and we have to make sure that the people that have been impacted are not impacted. But at the same time, we cannot just put our head on the sand and say no. We just have to make things work, and the mayor of the city has the ability and the power, not only to direct staff, but if I become your mayor, I can tell you that I'm gonna be at that negotiating table, and you're gonna make me responsible for the outcome. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate De La Fuente. And next, we have candidate Hodge.
I'm gonna do my best to, like, do this in a minute, because I realize people are starting to go home, it's starting to get cool out here. I'm gonna give you 30 seconds back if I can. Um, my name is Greg Hodge. I don't know what number I am on the ballot, but I appreciate what you're, I'll listen to it. All right. Equitable development is what we need, and so that requires us to listen to neighbors. It requires us to listen to the concern of Chinatown, West Oakland. I live in West Oakland. The question about Howard Terminal, impacts on air quality with Margaret Gordon at Environmental Indicators Project and other work that has happened, we've brought the air quality up because the trucks aren't idling anymore. The similar concerns have to happen with Howard Terminal. Um, and then lastly, on pedestrian, um, traffic controls, we definitely need to work on more controls, more technology that we can use in intersections to actually hold people accountable who race through intersections, and something that's really difficult, working with younger people who are driving, the wreckless driving that we're talking about, and helping them really understand how harmful it is. We had a pedestrian, uh, fatality at the corner of Jefferson and 16th. A dad was out one morning, and somebody just raced through that intersection. So we gotta start talking to our kids, to our young folks, to ourselves about how we do this. And I'm giving you 29 seconds back.
Thank you, candidate Hodge. Okay, thank you very much for that short break. Um, we are on to question four out of five. Um, and the question is with regards to increase in general public open space. Parks and recreation centers are among the most important types of social infrastructure that help us build relationships with our neighbors. The city of Oakland spends less than 2% of its budget on Parks and Rec Department. As mayor, how will you ensure efficient and responsive implementation of the city's various strategies outlined in existing plans? How would you resource and prioritize capital projects like the Lincoln Rec Center renovation so that it has the resources to be completed? And for this question, we are beginning with candidate Jordan.
First off, it's getting very cold out here. But second off, I really don't feel that I'm knowledgeable enough to give an educated answer. I'm just being honest. So I think I'll pass on this one. Something, I, I need to give something like this further as well to give an educated answer.
Thank you, candidate Jordan. Next, we have candidate Raymond.
So the issue of, of open space also, uh, really devolves to the question of land itself, and what purpose is, is land gonna be used for? Is it strictly a matter of profit for the real estate developers? Or is it gonna be land for us as the people here in Oakland to use? I was, I participated, and that relates directly to the question of privatization of public land. I was very involved several years ago in the campaign to stop the privatization of a large part of beautiful Nolan Park up in the Oakland Hills. We need to get the finances to build new parks and to, um, to renovate and improve the public parks that we have. Where can those finances come from? We have, number one, we should be taxing the port of Oakland. Number two, we need a campaign here Number two, we need a campaign here, starting here in Oakland, to change the tax structure in in the state to make the corporations, the real estate developers, and the wealthy pay the taxes that they need to pay, that we need them to pay in order to improve public spaces and parks here in Oakland and around the state.
Thank you, candidate Raymond. Next, we have candidate Scott.
I've been waiting for this question. So I have a plan to overgrow Oakland. We have over 500 parcels of tax-abated land in Alameda County that could be used to grow food. There's nothing more urgent than using our public spaces to grow food and have community livestock. And the best thing that I've ever done in Oakland was start bottoms-up community gardens in West Oakland, where we have chickens, ducks, goats, pigs, and bees. We've had some sheep, but they were a little pricier to keep. What I'm getting at is this, how many people out here are not from America? You ever notice in your country, there's not a uncommon thing to see a community garden? In one of the most developed cities in the world, of Seoul, South Korea, there are community gardens aplenty, and the elders take care of them. And they take care of them while they teach our children how to be resilient and grow food. As we're looking at our prices of groceries in our grocery store today, I think it's obvious that we need to be more resilient and grow food as our elders. Many of you have to stand in food banks weekly just to supplement your diet. So we're going to take control of our public spaces to grow food and plant medicine. We're going to introduce an Edible Oakland Walking Foraging Map so people can walk around Oakland, know where the community gardens are and where your edible landscape are. Oakland has an edible landscape. Most of our trees are edible, and many of our foliage are traditional and edible. So we're going to double down on that and spend money with it. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Scott. Up next, we have candidate Reed.
Yes, this is exciting. We have over $18 million coming into the city for open spaces and parks. And right here at Lincoln Square Park, the heart of Chinatown, we know that there's nearly $12 million being invested, $8 million from the state, $4 million from the city. And there's a lot more investment that we can do to make sure that we've got great open spaces for people to come, take sunshine breaks, for our seniors to get out, for our children to get out, for our community to come together, for us to use open spaces as healing spaces for us to talk and share and thrive. In East Oakland, I've certainly supported a Freedom Farm, where we've got 100 planter boxes that help to feed nearly 300 families at our open space public land, that while we're waiting to build housing, we are using that land to create a space for community to gather, for community to be nursed, and community to be fed. We've got a number of parks that we are looking to do that for, enhancing them with estate investment, putting more deeper funds in partnership with private organizations, working with companies who will equally invest into the city as we've seen in other communities. And the budget last year and this year focuses on how we invest in our community parks. We invest a lot in Lake Merritt, but it's the community parks that our seniors and our children want to be able to safely gather and come to. And we need to ensure that those spaces are available, that they are accessible, that the transit around them creates that opportunity for them to get there safely, and that they're well-lit and vibrant, just like we are here tonight, every night of the week.
Thank you, candidate Reed. Next, we have candidate Vianueva.
Thank you for the question, Alisa Victory Vianueva, still number seven on your ballot. For our Parks and Recreation Department, we need to have equity among the Parks and Rec. I agree with what councilmember Reed just said, that some of them are highly cleaned, have a lot of services, have transit, and are accessible, and others have just been basically forgotten, have been rundown for decades, my entire life. A lot of those happen to be in the flatlands, happen to be in communities of color. So I want to have equitable services across our city from our departments of Parks and Recs, but we also need to increase the investment. 2% is not enough to serve our entire city, knowing that green space, access to outdoors, provides recreation, provides health, provides safety, especially for our youth, provides education, and provides, again, a place of community, a place for us to gather like this. So we need to have all of our parks open, all of them adequately stacked and resourced, and that requires us having the will to budget all of our departments in terms of what they need, to staff all of our departments. It means that we're going to also make sure that our parks aren't being used as homeless shelters, because we have a city auditor that just released a report that we've been spending millions and not addressing our housing crisis. Right, as I said, all of our businesses, our parks, our public spaces have been de facto shelters, because we won't provide real shelter. We won't provide real service. Most parks, including Lake Merritt, have tent encampments or people living individually in tents. I want us to provide real housing so we can use our green spaces, and again, open up the ones that we already have, including the MLK Shoreline. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Vianueva. Next, we have candidate Lou.
When I turn all sizable parks in Oakland, where you need three parks attractions, like Diamond Park, for example, I'm going to put zip line across trees, all right? We're going to have concerts, rave parties, all right? How are we going to fund this, all right? That's why I am selling concealed carry permits for $50, all right? We got over like 30 million adults in California that would want to come here, get a permit. They paid $50, and I would put that money in good use, putting up a giant water slide at Lake Merritt, and it'll be fun for the kids. I mean, if you have something for the teenagers to do, they would not go around doing crime, all right? So something good for our teenagers, have something good to do. All right, thank you.
Thank you, candidate Lou. Next, we have candidate De La Fuente.
Thank you. Definitely, definitely a priority we have to prioritize. And as much as we want to do everything, we know that we cannot do everything. So the first, we have to, we can have these beautiful parks, but they are taken over by homies and cabins, and they are not safe. Who cares? All right, so the first thing we got to recognize that we have to take our back, park back. A lot of our parks are taken over by homies and cabins. A lot of our parks, I agree, they have not getting the same attention that all the parks are getting, but it's a question of priorities. And I can guarantee you that that's one of the, if you look at my record, the 20 years that I was there, says our Chavez, Dolores Park, many of the parts in my district, the district that I represented, it was referred to when I was in the city council. Why? Because I believe that especially hardworking people, they don't have open space, and the parks are the only place that they can take their children. But right now, we're in a crisis, and we know it. Right now, people are afraid not only to be in the street, but be in our parks. So first, we have to take them back. Secondly, we have to prioritize. Thirdly, we have to make sure that we allocate reasonable resources, but as much as, as much as we want to do everything, we can. So priorities is a, is a must.
Thank you, candidate De La Fuente. Next, we have candidate Tell.
I 100% support the renovation for Lincoln Square Parks. Parks to me are very personal. I've lived in apartments the majority of my life, and parks to me is my front yard and my backyard, and so it is that case for many families here. And I have a proven track record to prove how much I care about parks. I, again, just won $2 million for East Oakland Parks, because just like how even though I do not represent Chinatown, I come out here and I give you all resources, that is what I'm doing too. I'm tired of waiting for those parks to receive the resources that they so deserve. And so I went and I used my connection with the state Assembly members and senators that I have, that have endorsed me, including with Assembly member Mia Bonham, Assembly member Phil Ting, Speaker Anthony Rendon, and many more, to win these funds. And I want to win more funds for the city of Oakland. And so I put millions in investment into Cortland Creek Park. Also, I invested two new staffers at Brookdale Park so that we can bring programming to our kids. Allendale is fully renovated now, and the play structure is up. Montclair has pickleball courts that you can utilize. Joaquin Miller Park has clean restrooms, and Cascades is going again. Diamond Park, the tennis courts is all renovated, and there's more trash pickups there. School closures are also a big deal as well, too, because that's public land that is trying to be privatized, so I'm against the school closures. And I also gave back land in my district to the Alone Tribe, Segorote. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Tell. Next, we have candidate Hodge.
Thank you for the question. Open space is critical to our health. The more we can do to have green spaces that are open to the public, making sure that we balance the needs of young people and seniors, it's going to make a huge difference. Oakland has a historic role in terms of its parks. Back in the '40s, '50s, and '60s, we had, we were a model for the nation, and I think we can become that again. Let's make sure we use more green space for gardens. Let's improve the parks of all the deferred maintenance, like at the Fermory and other parks around the city. We need to do a much better job. I support what was happening over in Lincoln Rec Center, as well as the Malanga at the Fermory, and we should make sure that every time we do a development, we're not negotiating a new community benefits agreement, but that we have a community benefits ordinance, and we begin to spread those resources around the city. Other than that, and then one last idea, we have the Coliseum Complex that the African-American Sports Entertainment Group is working to, you know, re-energize. Great opportunity for green space in that part of the city. I'm giving you back 45 seconds this time. Go.
Thank you, candidate Hodge. And next, we have candidate Taylor.
All right, I guess I'm the last. Yes, open space is critical. We have to create that space for our residents, young and old, to come and enjoy. It's got to be equitably accessible. That means that we have to be able to get there, the transportation options. It has to be close by. For too long, open space in the hills and other parts of the city means parks, active playgrounds, and in other parts of the city, it means vacant, unprogrammed parcels, parks, vacant lots. The inequitable nature of things is something we have to address, and that's why I had to say no. When my colleagues on the council put forth a budget that even though Districts 5, 6, and 7 represents 60% of the landmass of this city, they only allowed 15% of the dollars, the funding that was being allocated, to go to those areas. And I want to acknowledge councilmember Reed for standing with me against the rest of the council that was trying to be inequitable. We have to ensure the equitable distribution of resources to parks and open spaces across our city. That's what I will do as Oakland's next mayor, just as I took vacant lots and worked with the Black Cultural Zone to turn them into urban oases like Liberation Park, just like I worked to bring more than $8 million into parks across District 6 since I've been in office. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Taylor. At this time, before we move into our fifth and final question, we'll take one minute as a break for our interpreters. All right, thank you all so much. We are at the fifth and final question from community for this mayoral forum before moving into the one-minute closing statements. So the last question from our community here is, how will you center the voices, needs, and ideas of youth in transforming Oakland City Government to be more responsive to our youngest residents? If you have listened to any Chinatown youth during your campaign, what are their top priorities right now? And we will begin this, this question with candidate Raymond.
Well, in the first place, it's a complete travesty that somebody as young as 16 years old can be tried as an adult and sent to prison for life, and they cannot vote. If you're old enough to be tried as an adult, you're old enough to vote. And I think that we need the right to vote for everybody 16 years old and up. I also think that we've seen in the past how the youth have led the movement for change in America. That was true in the Civil Rights Movement. It was true in the Labor Movement. And I saw that personally, and I was a participant in that back in the 1960s. And we need to revive that sort of movement amongst the youth today. And that is particularly important around the question of global warming, which is something that will devastate the entire planet. So we need to bring those issues to the youth and encourage the youth to organize and lead the way for change.
Thank you, candidate Raymond. And now candidate Tell.
I love this question as well. So our youth is our future, and if we really want to talk about public safety, it's about investing in them now on the front end so that we don't actually complain about how they're committing crimes or property crimes or what have you in the back end. And so as Oakland's next mayor, I want to create a robust, paid youth internship program where we work with OUSD, the city, private partnerships, so that we can get money into our young people's pockets, so that we can keep them busy. And keeping them busy and putting money into their pockets will also add to their social network, so they can expand their social network, and not just that, but also teach them the financial literacy that they so need and so deserve in order to be successful. More so, city jobs, we have so many vacancies, between 24% to 40% vacancies in city hall. We need to make sure that it is our young people who are taking on those entry-level jobs. They are great, great paying jobs. And so when our young people graduate high school and they decide that they don't want to go straight to college right away, like myself, that they have an opportunity to have a great paying job so they can continue to live here, play here, serve their community here, and also have a family here if they would like to. I am also very proud to have a youth internship program on my campaign, and I will do so as your mayor as well. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Tell. And now candidate Taylor, please.
Yes, thank you for this question. As one of, I believe, maybe only two candidates who grew up here in Oakland, this is a personal question to me because I am one of those youth that we're talking about, one who was born and raised here, a product of those who invested in me, poured into me, listened to me, the things that would be helpful as I was growing up, as I was exploring, as I was seeing solutions that could be realized within my city. And so absolutely, centering young people is priority for me, and you have seen that in how I have led as a council member. When I architected and co-chaired the Reimagining Public Safety Task Force, we created a youth subcommittee that specifically engaged the voices of our young people and how we can help to improve public safety from their perspective. When it came to how we created budget opportunities, we held in District 6 forums that engaged youth, specifically asking for their input, their ideas. And yes, partnering with the schools, partnering with the city, we have created opportunities for our young people to have career, education, knowledge that they otherwise wouldn't have had. And so that will continue to be a central theme as I lead as Oakland's next mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Taylor. And now candidate Hodge.
Thank you for the question. As I look out here and I see seniors, I see middle-aged folks in and behind us, or young people, we're all kind of in this together. For me, as a parent of five, grandfather of one, and the years of working with Oakland Unified School District as a board member for eight years, Freedom Schools, Oakland Fund for Children and Youth, connected to EYDC out in East Oakland, Youth Employment Partnership, Homies Empowerment, these are all groups I've had opportunity to work with over the years, as well as the Mayor's Summer Jobs Program as a member of the Workforce Investment Board. When I hear young people in Chinatown, I hear the same things with young people in Sobrante Park, in West Oakland, in Fruitvale, all over. Kids basically want a better education that's culturally grounded. They want to have job opportunities during the summer and after schools, and they want to have fun. So turf and skate, for instance, is something I saw the other day, where kids are skating and turf dancing. If you don't know what turf dancing is, get on Google Tonight and check it out. They want safe spaces. They want, you want a demo? I won't wait for you to do that. They're, they're, I had to demo at the turf and skate thing. It's hilarious, okay? And then lastly, art. Young people are interested in making art, whether it's visual art, spoken word, murals that go up around town, those are all the things that young people want, and they want to be safe. I'm giving you 15 seconds back this time.
Thank you, candidate Hodge. And now candidate Jordan.
Well, I would like, I would make the youth part of, part of the solution as mayor of Oakland. I would bring them in to my administration. As mayor of Oakland, I would bring them in to my administration and bring them into our local government on a more active basis and include them and not exclude them. I think most of the youth, they want safe schools, they want safe streets, they want a lot of the things that we need as adults. So I would have them, most of the youth play, I would have the youth play a more active part, a more active role in the decision-making process on the city level.
Thank you, candidate Jordan, and now candidate Villanueva.
Thank you for the question. I'm Alisa Victory Villanueva, number seven on your ballot. This is very important to me as one of the youngest candidates, if not the youngest in this race, but I'm a product of youth leadership, of strong and heavy investments in a special era in this city. My first job was paid in high school with Oakland Youth Together to educate people about ethnic studies, about how our school system was being funded, to go to trainings. They offered me a space to go to retreats the first time I'd even left the city. They provided me with BART cards so that I can get to different schools and visit my peers. We have to have heavy investments in resourcing for our youth, and that's what I will do in my administration. I am a proud sponsor of Oakland Youth Vote, which passed two years ago by all of you, our voters, but our registrar has not implemented it. There's a lot going on with our democracy, and I will ensure that those laws, those rights that our youth already have, will be implemented strongly, that Oakland becomes a leader in youth civic engagement. We have a youth advisory commission already. We need to make that commission stronger. We need to have more youth town halls where us as electeds are actually listening to them. We need to make sure that the mayor, that the council has to actually vote or weigh in on the advice that they are giving back to us. When I talk to our youth, they're worried about all the same things we are. They're worried about violence in their schools, around their schools. They're worried about money. Like I said, I worked when I was in high school. I worked to take care of my family, and again, we became homeless in high school. Right? They're worried about housing. We have a city-sponsored youth encampments, right? Our youth are worried and dealing with all the same things we are, but have even less power. They have to be included at the table.
Thank you, candidate Villanueva.
Thank you.
And now we have candidate Lou.
Oh, these kids are going to love me. Every park will turn to sizable parks in Oakland, very, there's going to be a lot of entertainment, okay? So, and these kids, I was poor once, all right? So when my parents came home, they couldn't possibly take me to any amusement park. It was very expensive. You know what I'm going to do for Oakland kids? I'm going to give them huge discount, like 50% discount on all rides, every park in Oakland, all right? So, and if they want to learn how to be rich, I'm teaching them how to be multimillionaires. So they can learn the right way, how to be rich like me, and despite where their schooling comes from, like poor schools or up in the hills, it doesn't matter. I will teach them how to be rich and how to be prosperous, and they would never, ever have to worry about where they're going to live, how much rent we're going to pay. You know, I'm going to teach them how to buy properties with cash, all right? Just buy it off. Like, you don't have to rent. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Lou. Next is candidate Reed.
I think it's an incredible time to invest more deeply into our youth. In this last budget, I ensured that we invested more than a half a million dollars in our youth, community organizations that are serving our youth. I serve on the board of East Oakland Youth Development Center. I've served on the board for the advisory committee for the Crucible, for community education partners, where we work to provide support to our children and youth who are not housed. Our children want to be safe in school. They want to know that they're safe in school, and they want to know that they're safe coming to and from school. I've worked in this budget to get funding for our OK program, to get our kids home from after-school programs for their parents not to have to worry about. They want to have clean parks. I invested certainly $8 million in the Verde's Carter Park, $200,000 in our community parks for skate parks, for basketball equipment, for soccer fields. Our kids want to have activities. Our kids want us to be invested in their jobs. I've hired and paid our interns in our office, and I've supported that our commissions also pay our youth who serve our city. Our youth want to have their vote count, and so we're working with the registrar to allow that vote that was passed for our 16-year-olds to vote to be able to count, and they also want their parents, who are immigrants and refugees, to be able to count. And so this November, you'll have that opportunity to vote for the non-citizens voting measure that I helped to co-author for parents, 13,000 parents of Oakland Unified School District students who don't have that power to vote to also vote. Our children want to make sure that there's mentorships for them. I serve on Youth Alive, and they want to make sure that there's mentor opportunities to keep them safe with life coaches to help to guide them through life.
Thank you, candidate Reed, and next we have candidate Scott.
The children and the elders are the bookends of our society. When you lose either of them, things fall apart, like they are now, and we've lost them. I'm ashamed to say that as an adult, you should be ashamed to feel as an adult that we have lost our children. Children speak any language. Many of you here speak more than one language. Most of you learned them as a child. Children speak languages that are unspoken, like those of society collapse and escalating violence. When your average violent perpetrator, like the one who is robbing our Asian citizens in Chinatown, our young black men, what does this mean? That means we've lost them. In the youthful rebellion, the young are eating the old. It won't stop. We feed our children poison in schools. They barely can read as they graduate. The amount of investment and attention that we put into our children and our elders has been ephemeral. Everyone deserves better. It is more than rhetoric. It's more than a purity contest for formative politics. We need real tangible solutions that will help our children and regain hope for their future. And it starts with us. Let's put our phones down. Let's put our computers down. Let's start to talk to our youth, mentor them, and love them once again. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Scott, and now we have candidate LaFuentes.
Thank you. First, definitely, we have to create a safe environment first for anything to happen. Oakland used to be a city that had thousands of jobs. I came to this city 50 years ago, and I can tell you that we have all kinds of different opportunities to work. We have, we were the hub of manufacturing in the East Bay. We had incredible opportunities, and now we lost, we lost all of that. So we have to go back to the basics. We have to make the city safe. We have to create opportunities. We have to make sure that we attract businesses. We have to make sure that we create jobs, because the reality is that the cities don't create jobs. I know that, I know that people expect the cities to do everything, and we say sometimes everything. We can't. We have to understand that those opportunities have to be created, and we have to attract them. We have to make sure that we are the ones that creating those opportunities by attracting businesses and creating jobs. And the only way to do it is to create a safe environment, not only for our youth, but for businesses to come to Oakland. Businesses are leaving Oakland. We are losing a lot of our jobs and a lot of our businesses. Why? Because they don't feel safe. Why? Because they cannot have a hard time hiring people, right? So we have to change that, and the only way to change it is by creating an environment that is friendly to business. But as mayor, I'm going to deliver that message, that we are open for business. We're going to streamline the process so we can attract businesses and make those things happen. The reality there is that that's the only way that will happen.
Thank you, candidate De La Fuente. And this concludes the question portion of our forum. A quick round of applause for all of our candidates before we move into closing statements. And in the interest of time, we are going to begin those closing statements now. As a reminder, each candidate has one minute, as opposed to the minute and 30 seconds that you were just allotted. And to begin, we have back-to-back. Candidate De La Fuente, you are first for closing statements.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here tonight. Like I said at the beginning, I served here for 20 years in the city council. I'm coming back because I can't just stand and watch what's happening to Oakland. Oakland was different. Chinatown was different. Chinatown, Fruitvale was different. But now, we have given up. In Oakland now, every car breaks in, homicides, shootings, everything has become normal. Why? Because we have allowed it to become normal. I'm running for mayor not to, not to fix everything. I'm running to be for mayor to get the city back on track, to make sure that we go back to the basics, where we do the things that we are required to do, not the things that we would like to do. And I believe that the biggest responsibility of government is to make sure that you're safe, to make sure that you can walk the streets, to make sure that you can patronize our businesses. Simple as that. That's the most, the biggest responsibility of government. That's the only reason why I decided to come back and take one more time, not to look for anything, just to keep back a city that...
Thank you, candidate De La Fuente, and now candidate Reed.
Thank you so much for waiting in this moment of change for us. This is a time that we have an opportunity to elect a mayor who will show up, that will listen to you, that will serve you, that will meet you where you are, and who will not forget about you, and who will lead the change that you deserve with action and accountability, and for you to see the results, for you to know that you are safe and protected and can live with peace, for you to know that our businesses in this community can stay open and alive and bring visitors back into this corridor to keep us thriving, for you to know that you are heard at the table, that we are prioritizing your voice, and that we will not tolerate attacks and crime and hatred against our Asian community or any communities, that you are seen and felt as seniors, as youth, as mothers, as leaders, as people that we want to see loved on, cared for, and thriving in this city from one generation to the next. I am that mayor who will lead with courageous change in action and making sure that we deliver for you day one.
Thank you, candidate Reed. Candidate Jordan.
Thank you very much for having this opportunity, giving me this opportunity to speak, to discuss my candidacy. I run for mayor, not for status, not for ego, but I run to continue to serve. I believe that office of mayor, I can use as a tool to improve the quality of life, because that's the only purpose of running for any office, to improve the quality of life for the residents of that particular city. So again, I think I would want to continue serving. I've served in the military. I was a union organizer. I served my city, the library commission. I'd love to continue serving at a higher level. I want to use my tool to improve the quality of life for all Oaklanders. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Jordan. Candidate Villanueva.
Thank you again to everyone who organized this forum and for you all for being with us. I'm Alisa Victory Villanueva. I am number seven on the ballot. I keep saying that because it's a huge, big deal for me to even be on your ballot, because I was illegally disqualified by our city for two weeks, but I'm the only civil rights attorney that has a law degree focused in government, who knows what our charter says, who knows what our city law says, who made our city do justice and put me on the ballot. I want to acknowledge Derek Sue, Monisha Carter, and Albert Owens, who were disqualified because of the city's antics. I also want to make clear my position on Howard Terminal that I didn't think I answered, that I'm opposed to it unless there are robust community benefits in line with what I helped to negotiate for six months with hundreds of other residents on the Jobs and Economic Development Steering Committee. I've served so many different committees, so many different vision processes, town halls, advisor, Reimagining Public Safety Task Force, because that's what I do. I help our government do their jobs, and I'm running to lead from the front now, not from behind the scenes. My website's VictoryForOakland.com. I'm endorsed by A-Print Action and many others. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Villanueva. Candidate Lou.
When you teach kids to be the rich, the legal way, they will, they will less likely to be criminals, depriving the life and property of others. So that's why I think it's very important to teach our youth to get on the right path. And yeah, for those giant waterslides, you know, it's something that we need. Like, my kids, when they want to go for entertainment, I have to drive them like 40 minutes to like Concord Hurricane, you know, like Six Flags Dela Hall, or Great America. You know, with these gas prices, I'm not going to drive them that far, you know? If I make Oakland a unique team attractions everywhere with these parks, our kids will have a rare bright future playing right here in Oakland, and the money that they pay for those entertainment will be reinvested in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Lou. Candidate Tell.
Thank you all so much for having us tonight. You know, Oakland is at a very pivotal point right now, and we need a mayor who can work with others. That's the only way we get things done, and I am so honored to be that collaborative leader, so that when I am your next mayor, I will be working with the city council. I'm honored to have the majority of the city council's endorsements and support, including Councilmember Call, President Bass, Vice Mayor Kaplan, and many others. I am also the endorsed candidate for the Democratic Party. Attorney General Robbata has endorsed our campaign, and Sierra Club has endorsed our campaign, along with Asian Pacific American Labor Alliance and city workers. We need city workers to bring up their morale, and I could be that person so that we can get services delivered. I also want to say that I am the sole endorsed candidate for Sierra Club, because there is coal and pollution money in this race, and picking me on your ballot as your number one vote means that I will be protecting you from these polluters. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Tell. Candidate Taylor.
Oakland is an amazing city. I know we're all proud to be here, but we recognize that we have real problems and real challenges. When residents are afraid to go out into their neighborhoods, to go out downtown, when they're worried about their futures, we have work to do. In order to address the real challenges that we have, we need a leader who's going to make the tough decisions. Yes, we have to be collaborative, but collaborative by itself is not going to deliver for you. I will be anchored to serving you as residents of Oakland. 1,600 emails, the 1,600 signatures, when you call for help, I will be committed to making sure that we deliver, so that all Oaklanders can live, work, learn, play safely right here in the town that you're from or that you've chosen to make your home. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Taylor. Candidate Scott.
Thank you so much for having me. I'll start with, leadership is action, not position. So here's what I have to offer you, Oakland. The positions of city council and mayor are the lowest-level positions we have. They serve exclusively neighbors and local businesses. I don't feel like this office does right now, so that's why I'm running. I'm offering you a chance to hit the reset button. Right? Hit that button on Oakland's politics. I'm number one on the ballot. My name is Senator Scott. Look me up. You want a real leader who's courageous, whose actions match their ambition to create a city and neighborhood that I say is a liberal, please vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Scott. Candidate Hodge.
First, I want to just thank all of you for being here tonight, for taking time away from your families and other things you could have been doing. I want to thank the organizers. I want to thank Joshua for doing an excellent job tonight. We've been to a lot of forums together, and we, you know, got our own sense of like what works. It was very well organized. A couple of people, just lastly in closing, I want to say, there's one major thing I'm going to promise you. If elected mayor, I'm going to listen to you. I'm going to listen to what you care about. I'm going to listen to what your kids care about, what your seniors, your parents care about, because the only way we get through this crisis that we're in is by listening to each other. Second, if you want to have city government and you want to do the same things you've been doing, you want to see the same outcomes, do not vote for me. But if you want to see a systems transformation, if you want to see us listen to each other, lift up the best ideas and lead. Greg Hodge, you can see more about our campaign at www.hodgeforOakland.com. Please be safe getting home tonight. If you're by yourself, make sure somebody goes in your car or gets you to a safe place tonight, and we love you. Thanks.
Thank you, candidate Hodge, and candidate Raymond.
I'm the working-class socialist candidate for mayor, and that means two things. First of all, it means that I am not so naive, and I don't hope that you are not so naive, as to think that somebody fell on top can produce the changes. It's up to us as workers to organize. Secondly, it means we have to look at the bigger picture, and we have twin disasters heading down the tracks towards us. One is the possible return to power of a fascist-linked president, Donald Trump. The other is the issue of global warming, and any attempt, any pretense to, that we can make changes here in Oakland without taking those things into account is simply shuffling around the lounge chairs on the decks of the Titanic. So we need to organize. We need to build a working-class party, and we need to transform the country into a form of society that really benefits us and... thực sự lợi ích cho chúng tôi và được kiểm soát bởi chúng tôi, nhân viên. Chúng tôi cần xã hội.
Cảm ơn người候选人Raymond. Và như một người có gia đình đã sống và làm nhiều thế kỷ ở Chinatown, ở Oakland, tôi muốn cám ơn bạn trên cơ sở của cộng đồng của chúng tôi vì đã là một phần của forum này. Một vòng khép kín chào mừng cho tất cả các候选人. Chúng tôi mong muốn bạn có những điều tốt nhất trong cuộc biểu diễn của bạn.
Chúng tôi sắp chuẩn bị để kết thúc tối nay. Cảm ơn. Xin lỗi. Tôi chỉ muốn nói và echo những gì Joshua đã nói. Và tôi đã bị động về tất cả sự yêu thích và tình yêu mà mỗi người trong số các bạn đã mang đến Oakland. Và tôi nghĩ rằng cộng đồng của chúng tôi thực sự được phục vụ tốt bởi tất cả những quan điểm và suy nghĩ mà các bạn đã mang đến tâm thức của chúng tôi tối nay. Vậy, các thành viên của khán giả, tôi hy vọng tất cả các bạn đã được inspira để bầu cử thành viên县长. Nếu các bạn chưa đăng ký và có quyền bầu, hãy làm điều đó. Đi đến bàn bàn đó và để tiếng nói của các bạn được nghe. Vậy, trên cơ sở của tất cả các nhà sponsors, tôi đã gọi họ ở đầu chương trình. Có rất nhiều ở khắp Oakland. Cảm ơn rất nhiều vì đã đến. Cảm ơn rất nhiều cho khán giả cũng vậy. Với sự tham gia của bạn trong quá trình bầu cử, chúng tôi biết rằng lời bầu cử của bạn sẽ được thông báo bởi ý kiến được thông báo và chúng tôi sẽ bảo vệ nền dân chủ của chúng tôi thông qua hành động như tối nay. Vậy, cảm ơn rất nhiều.
Và hãy nhớ để cử bỏ bảng bầu cử trước ngày bầu cử vào 8 tháng 20 năm 2022. Và một lời cảm ơn lớn. Và một vòng khép kín chào mừng cho các interpreter và những người đang chạy theo đặc biệt. Cảm ơn rất nhiều. Anna, hãy.
Cảm ơn rất nhiều. Cho tất cả các候选人, nếu bạn muốn ở một bức ảnh với tất cả các tổ chức tổ chức buổi kiện này tối nay, chúng tôi sẽ làm điều đó thật nhanh. Mọi người trên hội đồng giám sát hoặc tổ chức tổ chức tối nay, hãy đến, chúng tôi sẽ làm một bức ảnh nhanh và sau đó chúng tôi sẽ để các候选人 đi và chúng tôi sẽ làm cleanup.
Yeah, please stand in front of this horseshoe area right here. In front, inside the horseshoe area. Và tôi có một lưu ý. Có thực sự 5 điểm để bạn标注 trên bảng bầu cử trong hệ thống bầu cử. Không chỉ 3, mà 5. Vậy,标注 top 5 lựa chọn. Đúng không? Cảm ơn.
All done, 4. All done.
Vài vài. Ah, cộng đồng Hàn. Hello, hello, cộng đồng Hàn. Hello, hello. Hãy chụp một bức ảnh. Good. Hello, hello. Yeah, vài vài. Tôi đã xong ở đây. Đấu tranh đã xong. Yeah. Tôi muốn ngồi trên chiếc xe hơi mới. Tôi không muốn nói bất cứ điều gì. But... Just let's see. Yeah. Alright. I'm side out. Good night.